We live, alright, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at six thirty-four, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of Richard Sand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Berman?
Here.
Trustee Bluthart?
Here.
Trustee McNeil?
Here.
Trustee Pierce is absent, trustee Mason?
Here.
Trustee Peterson?
Present.
Mayor Gert.
Present. This is a public hearing regarding the annual appropriation ordinance. I'm gonna ask our finance director Zaida Torres to present the appropriation ordinance for the public.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Board. This is just the standard process as part of the budget process. We are required by state statute to pass an appropriation the first quarter after the budget, the start of the year. And what this is, is just the, we already have the operating budget, which is the budget that we operate day-to-day that you approve for us to do our daily operations and expenditures. The appropriation is more to cover, should more revenues like last year, we issue bonds, and we have the legal liability through the appropriation to spend above the operating budget. So these line items here is just hope if we were to get, generate revenue, or get a grant, or some funding that we could use to do capital projects for the expenditures, they're included in this package. The appropriation is always higher than the budget to allow room to legally spend. And it's just part of a standard procedure for every budget and community.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? This is public comments only relating to the appropriation ordinance. Alright, then if there's no comment, I'd ask for motion and a second to close the public meeting regarding the appropriation ordinance.
No.
Second.
Motion trustee Bluthart, second trustee Peterson. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, meeting is adjourned. We're gonna take a three to five minute recess, and we're gonna start the regular meeting. They said in probably about five minutes. We're waiting for one trustee on his way, and working on one of the agenda items here, so we'll be back in about five minutes. Alright, sorry about the delay. We are gonna call the regular village board meeting to order at six forty-four PM. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Trustee McNeil?
Here.
Pierce is absent. Trustee Mason?
Here.
Trustee Peterson?
Present.
Mayor Gert.
Present. Alright, so for the mayor report, a couple items. So first, we have the Fourth of July holiday coming up before our next meeting. We will not be having a meeting on July tenth. I know people are wondering if the park will be open on July fourth. It should be substantially completed around that time or mid-July. We are gonna have the park officially open August seventeenth for a grand opening. At this point, we wanna make sure all the plantings and sod and everything are protected and can sustain a large crowd using the site. So mark that date for your calendar. We have a couple people here tonight for recognition. One of the people here is Tenlee Madrilis. Did you hear? Okay. So she was unable to attend... What was her, what was her... She was a state wrestling champion at contact of the village, so we'll try and get her at another meeting. Is there Isabella here? Isabella Colada? Hi, how are you? You look like you're, you're looking nervous or surprised. How are you? So Isabella is here because she is a twenty-twenty-three state gymnastics floor champion and twenty-twenty-four regional vault champion. She'll be fourteen in a couple weeks, July seventeenth, and is a freshman at Antioch Community High School in the fall. She participated in the recreational gymnastics since she was eighteen month, oh, eighteen months old and began competitive gymnastics at age seven at the gymnastics zone in Antioch with coach Deb Basset. She has worked very hard over the past seven years and seen the fruits of her dedication and commitment to training to achieve her goals. She competed at the Illinois Excel State Meet in the Platinum Division on March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. She was the Illinois Platinum Excel State Floor Champion in her age division with a nine-point-five-five. She competed against people in her age group at the state of Illinois. Her second meet of the season was one of the best of the year, and it was the Santa's Workshop and Toy Drive in December twenty-twenty-three. She placed first on bars and first all-around. Sorry, my paperclip's still there. She is currently working at the gymnastics zone to increase her skill level so she can move up to the diamond level this fall and is continuing to compete in these competitions. I'm gonna ask her to come up here and again congratulate her, give her a certificate of achievement, and maybe tell us a little bit about her hard work at the microphone over there. Welcome. So those are your medals there. What are, what are the, what are those medals from?
So they're from the state and regional meets, and so this one's from state, and then this one's from regionals.
Alright, congratulations. And are you still competing through the gymnastics zone or a club? Okay. Alright, well, tell you, tell your coach and your team to keep up the good work, okay?
Thank you.
Alright, so here's the certificate. Alright, we have two appointments, one appointment and one reappointment. Tonight, we have Mr. Jose Martinez here for appointment to the planning and zoning board with a term ending twenty-twenty-seven. We had a half dozen to a dozen applicants. We narrowed those down to three or four for the process, three or four for interviews. Director Garrigan and Cheryl Henning, who's the chair of the planning and zoning board, conducted those interviews, and they recommended Mr. Martinez for the position. I also was able to interview him and talk to him on the phone. He's an Antioch resident, conductor on the Metro Train. Alright, so again, I'd ask for a motion and a second to confirm his appointment to the planning and zoning board. So move. Motion trustee Bluthart, second trustee Berman. Any discussion regarding this item? Alright, roll call, please.
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Congratulations. Okay, alright, we have one more reappointments. Mr. Jim Kinney to the Police and Fire Commission with a term ending twenty-twenty-seven. He's been in that position for quite some time now and actually served with him on that board many years ago. So he'll even chairman now. Okay, so again, I'm asking for a motion and a second to reappoint Mr. Kinney, trustee Mason.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Yes.
Pierce?
I don't even know what was going on, so I'm gonna pass.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Congratulations. So now the clerk will administer the oath to Jose and Jim, and we will move on to citizens wishing to address the board. After she does this, if there's anybody that wishes to address the board in public comment, please come and sign up at the dais here, because we're gonna do that next. Thank you. Alright. Yeah, go do that while we're talking. Okay, so next is citizens wishing to address the board. See, will you hand that down? Thank you. Alright, I'm gonna hand this over to the clerk, who is going to call you up here to speak, and we will also read the rules for the public comments. Any of those that wish to leave at this point, please feel free at any time for the awards or whatever. Thank you.
The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the village, and public input is very helpful. The board must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please state your name and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous, and the board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. The board does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period.
Tom DiBaldo?
That's a good try. Hi, I'm Tom DiBaldo. I live on North Grand Avenue off of Beach Grove Road, directly across the street from a proposed solar farm at two fifty-one forty-nine West Beach Grove Road in unincorporated Lake County. This solar farm's gonna have some very negative impact on our homes and also on the surrounding environments. We will have decreased property values. Our homes are estimated decrease in value, decreasing value one hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each. Other homes in the area are gonna be comped against our homes, so every home in the area is gonna take a hit. The property is Zone E, estate or residential, not solar. That's why we purchased our homes there to begin with. There's gonna be emission of electric magnetic fields, which is harmful to humans, wildlife, and the ecosystem. Setback is a hundred and fifty feet, but the recommended safe distance is one-point-eight-six miles per the World Health Organization. Solar panels are constructed with dangerous chemicals such as lead, cadmium, and silica, which are known carcinogens and could possibly leach into our wells and lakes. This could result in environmental and health risks. Folks, we're one hailstorm or tornado away from ecological disaster. The proposed site is bordered by a forest preserve, residential subdivisions, and bluff lakes, part of the chain of lakes and a protected waterway. This is inconsistent use of the land and doesn't fit with the area. I think the spirit of House Bill forty-four twelve was meant to build these power plants in rural agricultural areas, not in residential subdivisions. The soil will be compacted by the building on the site and will lead to further flooding and runoff in the area. There's a risk of flash fires, and that's not good considering a hundred and fifty-foot setback. Heat generated by large arrays of solar panels will raise local temperature, which can affect the ecosystem. The glare will definitely have an effect on migratory birds like the American white pelican migration and lead to uncountable bird strikes. Who's gonna decommission the solar farm in twenty years? In all probability, this, this company will no longer be in existence. The land will never be able to be used again, creating a wasteland. Who's gonna take care of the people's health problems, poison wells and lakes? The real question is who benefits from this project? I ask that you do not support issuance of a conditional use permit for this parcel of land or a solar farm in any residential area in Lake County. I also suggest you consider annexing the property to crush the project. At a minimum, please support Bill HB forty-one thirty-five, which increases the setback from a hundred and fifty feet to five hundred feet, which is currently in the House Rules Committee in Springfield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn O'Doul? My name's Glenn O'Doul. I live at four-one-zero-seven-three North Lincoln Drive in Antioch, Illinois, unincorporated area across the street from the proposed Kia site and also the proposed marketplace site. I just have one question for the board. I'd like to know what century we're living in. Do we all know what century we're living in?
Yeah, we don't engage in debate for this.
Alright, so my take on the proposal for the marketplace is that this is a twentieth-century adventure, not a twenty-first-century adventure. If you're at all familiar with what's going on in, in, in retail marketing, there's so many large companies that have closed their doors. We have seen the adventures of Walmart and Target fall more into an online presence than a brick-and-mortar presence. I feel this is a very foolhardy adventure that may end up with just a piece of land that has been completely clear-cut. The results of some of this construction that's gone on has created a silt flow into Eastland Lake. We had thought that the city had taken the necessary steps to create a mitigation on that, but on June twenty-fifth, we had another inflow of the silt. I have timelines here of all the events that have happened that have impacted Loon Lake. I have a report from Lake County testing the water test sediments and the water, what, what was in the water that was coming out of that situation early in May, which indicated there were increased levels of nitrates and phosphates. This kind of situation, we may not know the impact of it for four or five years. We may know next year. The issue here is, is that our lake system and our unincorporated system that we have through Loon Lake Management Association, we personally, as individuals in that community, fund Loon Lake Management Association to maintain the integrity and the beauty of these lakes. Last year, we spent north of two hundred thousand dollars, and the majority of that money came out of homeowners' pockets to try to keep these lakes pristine. I don't understand why, if you are having something going on in your community, the village, as you proposed, the village, why we are not able to represent, have a board, have a seat on the board to represent our subdivision or that area of unincorporated Antioch so that we can understand better what your goals are and what the proposals are in the future. If we know what is going on, maybe there's some way we can help mitigate some of the damage that's already been done. In closing, I'd just like to say, whatever happens with whatever has happened to our lake because of this runoff, it's gonna ultimately end up our responsibility, because we can't, the city, the, the village isn't gonna help us. Ram and Kia isn't gonna help us, and Marketplace isn't gonna help us. If we continue to have this happen in our community, we're gonna lose residents that care about the lake. And we believe wholly and heartedly in Antioch being authentic by nature. I wish you did too.
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna, in a moment, go to the consent agenda, but there's one item that I just, on the agenda tonight, that I wanted to address that's received a lot of attention, has been talked about again tonight and for a while regarding solar farms and solar energy. So tonight's vote, essentially, and this is just for everybody in the public's knowledge or audience, the solar farm and North Avenue is going to either be on that site in the village or on that site in the town, in the, in the county. Whether that, if we approve it tonight, we control what it looks like. The ordinance that we passed has to be followed. We're able to make sure that there's certain bufferings and certain rules that are followed. Decisions made above this board at the state or federal level regarding solar energy or the ability to build solar farms is out of our control. A vote tonight by our board does not necessarily mean if they vote yes that they're in favor of solar panels everywhere or in favor of sheep. It's more about us being able to control how our community looks and be able to make sure that, like I said, what the county standards are versus what the village standards are are probably significantly different. So we've debated this item several times, so tonight is generally just gonna come up for a vote. The village attorney has been working hard with the residents that are closest to the solar farm, as well as the solar farm company itself. I will say the group that is here tonight presenting this item has done a lot of work with the village and has answered every question that we've asked them and have been shown to be good partners to date, and I would expect that they would continue that if we approve this tonight. If we disapprove it, that's the board's prerogative as well, but I just want the public to know that we're not here saying we're pro-solar panel or anti-solar panel. This is a matter of whether we want this to be in our village, which is currently a village property, or if we want it to be de-annexed into the county and still be there and be controlled by the county. So that's, that's essentially what we're voting on tonight, for those of you that haven't been following this. But on that note, I'm gonna move on to the consent agenda. Is there any items on the consent agenda that any of the trustees wish to remove for regular business? Alright, if not, I'd entertain a motion and a second. Motion trustee Mason? Berman? Trustee Berman, second trustee Berman. Roll call, please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. First item on the regular business is consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable that's prepared by staff in the amount of five-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion trustee Mason?
Second.
Second trustee McNeil. Any discussion? Roll call.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance approving the Antioch Marketplace redevelopment plan and project for the village of Antioch, Illinois pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act, ordinance number twenty-four dash oh-six dash thirty-four. Do I have a motion and a second waiving the second reading? Motion trustee Mason waiving the second reading, second trustee Pierce. Roll call, please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Consideration, number eight, is consideration and approval of an ordinance designating the Antioch Marketplace redevelopment project area, Tiff District, for the village of Antioch, Illinois pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act, ordinance number twenty-four dash oh-six dash three-five. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion trustee Mason?
Second.
Second trustee Pierce. Roll call, please.
Berman?
Yes.
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of an ordinance adopting tax increment allocation financing for the Antioch Marketplace redevelopment project area, Tiff District, for the village of Antioch, Illinois, ordinance number twenty-four dash oh-six dash thirty-six. Do I have a motion and a second waiving the second reading?
Second.
Motion trustee Mason, second trustee Pierce. Roll call, please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Consideration and approval of an ordinance granting land use relief for the property located at six fifty East North Avenue, Antioch, Illinois, special use permit, solar farm, ordinance number twenty-four dash oh-six dash three-seven. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion trustee Mason?
Second.
Second trustee Pierce. Roll call, please.
Berman?
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Number eleven, consideration and approval of an ordinance granting a variance from certain requirements related to commercial solar farms for six fifty East North Avenue, Antioch, Illinois, ordinance number twenty-four dash six dash thirty-eight. Do I have a motion and a second waiving the second reading? Motion trustee Mason?
Second.
Second trustee Pierce. Roll call, please.
No.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Item number twelve, consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing and approving a community benefit agreement with RPIL Solar Four LLC in the village of Antioch, Illinois, resolution number twenty-four dash fifty. Do I have a motion and a second?
A move.
Motion trustee Mason?
Can we have a quick discussion on this?
About the item, second first.
I'll second.
Well, second trustee Pierce, just briefly, a discussion, go ahead.
Since this has not been discussed before at a, at a committee of the whole, maybe appropriate to, I, I'd like to put my two cents in there. Obviously, there's some sort of community benefit agreement we've got in place with, with the, the company putting in the solar farm.
Sure, and so we've been...
Make sure that...
We were negotiating it for parks or something of that. We were negotiating, so attorney Viselli, literally up to the meeting, so he just, some of this information that's brand new.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Board, and I, and thank you, the attorneys with whom we were working with on this. So this is a community benefit agreement that does go to an offset of village costs for the installation of the solar farm by RPIL Solar Four LLC. It will be a condition of the conditional use permit or the special use permit, so if they do breach it, it would violate that. We have discussed that. They understand that this is important to us, and they are willing to work with us on this document that is subject to attorney review and approval, that I will bring back to you all, to ensure such matters are included in there, is to ensure that the animal rights for the agriculture, for the sheep that are gonna be out there is taken care of. We've already said that we're gonna follow all the applicable laws, but we also know that they're gonna have the engineering. We did speak to the neighbors across the way, and we ensured that they are protected visually from this by ten-foot planted trees at that point in time. Sir, we are in, not in public comment, just let me finish if you don't mind. Thank you. So this is a standard agreement. It is the most generous agreement of the industry given at this point in time.
Thank you.
It's seventy-five thousand dollars. We are negotiating time for the terms of the payment to be made. There are certain contingencies, such as their due diligence with regards to integration into the overall electronic grid, and so we are still working that out. Like I said, there, this, if you saw me going back and forth, we were literally negotiating terms going back and forth, and I'd like to thank the board for my indulgence going back and forth on there and trying to get this done for the village.
That's a good question.
Sure, sir, we're, with public comment, after the regular meeting, we're gonna, we have a committee of the whole meeting where I'll allow a little public comment again, so... There's a, this meeting is gonna be a couple agenda items, and then we'll start another meeting again, a third meeting after that, okay?
Oh, so for attorney Viselli, if we vote yes tonight, this would still be subject to modifications and change that would come before the board for another vote, or no?
My thought would be this. If there are material changes, I would bring this back to the board for another vote. If there are no material changes and I have the opportunity to discuss these changes, both with the chief executive and the board of trustees, I'll just do a memorandum and call out those changes. But we have talked about the tent whole member, covenants of this agreement. If nothing big changes, then I probably don't see the need to bring it back for a vote, because we are allowing for attorney review in the authorizing resolution.
But we'll, we'll confirm with trustees and myself and staff if, if there are or not changes.
Just wanna make sure the animals covered things we...
I won't sign it until you guys say it's fine.
Okay.
Understood, that's right. Thank you all for your comments.
Alright, roll call, please. This is item number twelve. Yep.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Alright, six voting yes, motion carries. Next item thirteen is consideration and approval of a resolution approving a site plan for real property located at the address commonly known as six fifty East North Avenue, Antioch, Illinois, solar farm, resolution number twenty-four dash fifty-one. Do I have a motion and a second?
A move.
Motion trustee Mason?
Second.
Second trustee Pierce. Roll call, please.
Berman?
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Item fourteen, consideration and approval of a resolution approving an extension of special use for consumed cannabis for an additional six months for the property commonly known as four fifty-three Main Street, resolution number twenty-four dash fifty-two. This is again for the construction within that timeframe, and I think today I did see them finally putting walls up over there, so... Do I have a motion and a second for that?
A move.
Motion trustee Bluthart, second trustee Peterson. Roll call, please.
Berman?
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
No.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Four voting yes, motion carries. Fifteen, consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing and approving an agreement for professional services between Dan Showman, Inc. and the village of Antioch, Illinois, resolution number twenty-four dash fifty-three. Do I have a motion and a second? I know that, again, this was never really discussed at the committee of the whole meetings, so there probably needs to be some clarification on this one, but motion or a second? Motion trustee Mason, Mason, second from trustee Peterson. Alright, it's on the floor for Mr. Viselli, who else might be able to shed some light on the, Mr. Garrigan, Chief Gacho. So I'll let you go with what...
So to ensure that we have as much access to the state and we are kept up to a breast along with... So to ensure that we have as much access to the state and that we are kept up to a breast, along with myself and my obligations. With ongoing issues with regards to grants and changes in the law and stopping certain changes in the law. The village is proposing entering into a contract with lobbyist, registered lobbyist, Dan Showman, Inc. Who is, um, has extended, extensive experience in Springfield. He has tremendous depth, and I have worked with him before, admittedly, he has tremendous depth with regards to both the legislative offices and the executive offices such as IDOT, DCEO. And IDOR, the Illinois Department of Revenue. As you are aware, the village is beset with problems that involve IDOT, IDOR, and DCEO. DCEO, for example, is the main funding source for grants and other economic initiatives in the village. Dan used to work at these agencies, Dan knows the people who work at these agencies, and Dan's worked with the legislators in those agencies. One provision of this contract that I think, I don't want to go line through line for the contract, there is a thirty-day termination clause. So in the event that we believe that this is not working out for the village, you can bring this back in thirty days and cancel the contract. Um, well, the realities of state lo, and local government interaction right now. All but requires a liaison between the state and local governments, while we all do our part on that, including myself frankly. Um, to have someone who's solely dedicated to that, in my experience, has been a huge benefit. And you can see the differences for those municipalities that get money and don't. And that's just frankly it, that's what this agreement's about, um, and I hope that that, um, provides a background on the nature of this and the contract.
And the only other thing, um, maybe chief or whoever else was involved in this, um, maybe give a little background on what happened with the a kind of a test the water type of item with the IDOT and a couple of grants.
Sure, so as you know, the village is currently pursuing a number of federal and state grant opportunities. Um, we have had much more access to both our federal and state legislators to have discussions regarding these grants, uh, which we have not had access to previously. Um, as you know, grant funding takes time to work its way through the system, so we're not going to have an answer tomorrow on whether or not um, the lobbying was successful in helping us achieve these grants. I could tell, uh, from staff's, staff's experience, and we have had pretty great success in our interactions with IDOT. I think the board is well aware of some of the challenges and interacting with IDOT and getting them to move along on some of the initiatives that we need to achieve. Um, even working with HR green, our engineers, you know, we, we struggle at times with getting them to be responsive, like many state agencies. Um, Mr. Showman has proven himself very valuable, um, some of the items that came before the board tonight, he was um, invaluable, I would say, with some of the IDOT signatures and some of the IDOT authorizations that we needed, particularly for the Kia project and the marketplace project to move along. Um, he has set meetings with us with, with some members of DCEO, um, but again, we would not normally had access to, so. Um, he, he certainly has the necessary contacts and connections within Springfield to help us make things happen. Whether or not it's going to lead to, to ultimately to grant funding, that's yet unknown. And just one important thing to point out with the board, this would be an unbudgeted expense, I just want to be fully transparent with the board on that matter before, before they vote.
That this would be?
Would be. That it is a non-budgeted expense, correct.
Okay, um, so, again, lose some limited discussion, I know this is a, we don't usually do this during the regular part of the meeting, but this was not at the committee of the whole. So any questions for chief or, uh, one of the things I said, um, I would not consider it unless there's a thirty-day out clause, I was not going to agree to a year contract or even six months, so that was kind of a sticking point. Trustee Pierce, let me get some comments.
Um, over the years and not just this board, but previous boards going all the way back, uh, probably two thousand one.
Yeah, maybe that long.
Somewhere in that timeframe, um, we, we've hired grant writers and we've hired lobbyists and they just kind of disappear off into the, into the wind somewhere. How are we gonna track whether the thirty days is good or give some input to the board over the course of the year if you decide to keep them? What he's actually doing for the month?
Would, would something, um, suggested, and I know you've worked with him before at other villages. Would he be willing to give like a quarterly update or something so we know?
We do that.
That there's actual progress, okay?
Yeah, we do that, we require a quarterly update with, so that there is some, um, as you said, progress reports at that point in time. Um, and I will tell you, um, the interaction has been daily going forward. Honestly, we don't get the plats done from IDOT without Dan, full stop. It's been every day, I don't, having worked with him, and this isn't an endorsement, but having worked with him, we, he is very communicative. There would, there are always quarterly updates and there's usually a legislative briefing before and after sessions. To ensure we know not only those bills that we would want to support, but to kill those bills or postpone those bills like the grocery tax that Dan followed with me in a different community.
Alright, thank you.
So my comment would be if we're going to quarterly report this, this, this firm, I would like a quarterly report on the twenty-two thousand we spent for the geo fencing, what have we done with that? So if we do one, we do all, we spend it on, what, what's that done, it's been what, six months? What is the geo fence done for the village? To return to the taxpayers.
Certainly trustee, I think that's a reasonable request and.
So we do it for one, we do it for all.
We can have staff work on some for the next meeting.
Everybody is on the same ballgame.
Alright, yeah, and let's put together a list of those different consultants like that, you know, even our engineering firms or whoever we think that might be important for. Um, anybody else have any questions or comments, trustee Buthart?
Um, just a quick one, you, you stating here it's unbudgeted, where would you plan on taking these funds from?
With, with other, every budget, there are contingency funds built within it, so it would be, would be within the threshold of the contingency funds.
Thank you.
Alright, um, did a motion and a second, roll call please.
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Alright, six voting yes, motion carries, next is the administrator's report.
Just a couple of updates on our, on our current projects, um, as you can see, progress continues to move along at the park. Um, we will see some new, more additional sod going in next week, so within the next week or so, you should have a really good idea what the, the complete landscape look of that project is going to be. We continue to work on our public works schematic and design, um, hopefully within the next couple of months, we'll be able to come back to the, the board with revised concept, as I previously mentioned, um, our architects and our construction management firm are currently working on going back to the drawing board in many ways. Um, square footage has been scaled back to bit, the current, uh, concept is now a single-story building with much simpler roof lines. Still working out some of the details related to what's going to be the most economical exterior for that building, again, making sure that even though as we shrink square footage, that we're not compromising some of the very important operations that will take place out of that building. But, uh, we're, we're working in the right direction, uh, as given by the board. Um, we had our, uh, meeting today on some revised schematic for the village hall remodel, I'm at the current Sintegra building. Um, I think in the next thirty days or so, we should again, probably at the July meeting, be ready to bring the concept drawing to the village board, I, we did make a lot of progress and I'm excited to announce that through a lot of hard work and collaboration between staff and the architects. And again, our construction manager, we have found a way to incorporate a, um, a boardroom into the current footprint of the building. It will be approximately the same square footage as our current boardroom, maybe even a little bit larger, but with the layout and design, I think it'll be much more functional. And again, there'll be the opportunity to incorporate some of the modern technologies to make access to our community even better. Um, again, we think we'll deliver that within budget, um, but I thought it would be important for the board to know that we should have an opportunity to have a boardroom within the village hall. Yes, trustee?
It's been a while since we walked through the building before the purchase, and I don't even know if all the board members that are on the board right now were there when the purchase was made, I think they were, but, um, I think it may behoove us when you have the plans in hand. And we take a new tour of the building and kind of represent what we're looking.
Certainly, perhaps we can coordinate that shortly before a board meeting. Yep.
Not allowed.
Um, as you know, we recently had our, held our kickoff concert, forgive me there for a little stutter. Um, we continue to collect feedback, I think overall our community was, was excited about the event, um, there's always things that we can do better. Um, I've been having conversations with individuals in the community and, um, I'm, I'm sad to say it seems we missed, missed the opportunity to um, really exceed on ADA compliance and access for some of our disabled members of our community. Uh, I was able to get a lot of positive feedback on how we can improve some of those things and make it more accessible. You know, we thought we would have an abundance of, of handicap accessible parking, uh, we expanded it far beyond what we did last year, but come to find out, we still ran a little bit short. And then just making opportunities for, for the journey from some of those alternative parking areas and, and helping people with disabilities get to the VIP areas, things that, you know, we, we admittedly missed the ball on a little bit. Um, so I was very happy to have this feedback because without it, we can't make ourselves better. Um, I can tell the board we will do much better next year in particular in that area. Um, relative to follow-up with the board on our rental enforcement, Director Garrigan has been diligently working to roll that out and implement that at an expeditious pace, um, since the last discussion we've had. Letters to property owners that we have on file have been sent, um, informing them of the need to register and contact us when there's vacancies within those apartments to, um, uh, contact us for the inspections that are necessary under the ordinance. Uh, we did select a, a software vendor that we think will help streamline the process in the future. But we decided that we didn't want to wait any longer, so we'll be using an alternative method for now and we'll just incorporate software once that's up and operational, but we are moving forward at a expedited pace. Fourth of July is, the mayor mentioned, we're, we're quickly planning and quickly approaching. Um, we continue to evaluate how we do things each year, a couple of changes that I would like the board to be aware of is, as you know, we did purchase, um, security, security fencing for the downtown block. Over recent years, we've seen large growth in our, in our parade, they give the fourth of July parade and a number of our officers have reported during our post-action debriefs, a lot of close calls with young children encroaching onto the parade route, coming dangerously close to some of the floats, some of the animals, some of the, the race cars and those type of things that are uh, within the, within the parade route. Downtown has particularly been the, uh, kind of the sticking point or danger point for us. So we did purchase enough parade barriers for the downtown area that will be placed along the exterior, um, parking line, so it'll allow access up to the parade route in the designated manner. Again, it's, I don't know if you had an opportunity to see it at, uh, the, the kickoff concert, uh, but it's, it's stands about this high, it's the metal barrier type and you can see through it, so we don't anticipate it really creating any, uh, visual obstacles for people to enjoy the parade itself. A little bit of feedback I was hoping we can get from the board tonight, of course, the, uh, the quiet zone is always an issue of discussion. Um, a couple of years ago, we had a designated short quiet zone at the beginning of the route. Last year, um, the entire parade route was a quiet zone and as you can imagine, we had mixed feedback on that from the community, one thought that staff had was returning to a designated choir route, but making it a little bit larger than last year and the logical point for us for that would be from Park Avenue to Orchard Street, particular where the, the sound is going to bounce off the buildings and be a bit louder. Again, we're just talking about sirens and, and the horns of the emergency vehicles, not, not music. Um, so I would just kind of appreciate if the mayor would allow it a quick straw poll, the board to give us some guidance on what the board would like to see with that as we plan, and then one last thing to make the board aware of. We're currently in discussions with Lake County and their, particularly their public works department. Um, they are in the process of revitalizing their sanitary sewer project, um, to expand it beyond where it's at now. To provide sanitary sewer ser, service to the Channel Lakes area, uh, the unincorporated areas to try to eliminate many of the, uh, the septic systems, unfortunately, which I'm, I'm told many of which are failing, that are, uh, adjoining the Channel Lakes area. They currently have available funding to start studying where those wastes would flow to. Um, one such project, phase of the project, they would envision flowing to our sewer treatment plant. So we're in discussions with them where they would like to fund a study to evaluate our sewer treatment plant and how those um, how, how those inflows would impact our capacity and whether or not we do or do not have the capacity to do those. And of course, um, our community is, is our first priority to make sure that we have capacity for our residents and that we do have, remain reserved capacity for future growth, so we don't stymie any of those things. Um, if there's any technical questions, I'll have to turn it over to Director Heimbro, he's the expert in that field. Uh, but I at least wanted the board to know that we, we are in discussions with them and they will um, probably within the next ninety days, be sending a MOU for the board to review for consideration to authorize simply the study of our water treatment system to see if it's, if it's a viable option for them, and again, that would be at no cost to our community, would be fully funded by county plate. But that, unless there's any questions, I will conclude my report.
You brought up, we, we still are doing, this is maybe, Dennis, we're still doing the figure out where the storm water goes into the sewer stuff, right? We're still on the hunt for that stuff, that, that storm water.
Yeah.
Yeah, they had a good time to make some table.
Um, but I would just say, along with studying our, our sewer plant, uh, because they're covering such a large area. You know, they've got a large sewer plant over in Old Mill Creek, it's underutilized if I remember correctly. Um, designed for thousands of homes out that area.
Yeah, they're.
Are already being charged to help support.
They have a, uh, they have a number of different options that they're looking at, obviously with the Channel Lakes region, um, there's a lot of obstacles and barriers for them to try to navigate, it sounds like they're going to have a pretty challenging challenging time figuring out how to do some of those, those lakes that are south of us. The area that they're studying that would flow into our service would be the, the northern area that changed, so coming off the North Shore community, just north of us. So it wouldn't be the entire region, it would just be primarily the, the northern area of the lakes, um, down, up off North Avenue.
I, I just wanted to, to, because you asked for feedback for the quiet zone.
Yes.
Um, I, I agree with staff that we should just accept it, I think that way.
Downtown area?
Yeah.
Um, alright, straw poll, you want? Alright, so, fantastic, alright, so instead of the quiet zone, the whole parade, it's just when the trucks are between the buildings on Main Street, that's where they're knocking the boulder horns, is that?
We good with that for the board? I don't like it either.
No, I.
Oh, it hurts babies.
It, it damages the children, it, it damages everyone's ears, but
alright.
You gotta watch out for those kids and the parents, I never had a parent say to me, oh, I miss the fire engines. No one has ever said that to me, but I certainly hear, we leave when, you know, we, we'll, we'll come to the parade later. When we know the fire engines have gone by. So. I don't, I, I'm for just, it was very nice last year with.
So they could do it up to Park and then after Orchard, how about that?
Whatever the board would like to see.
Is that agreeable?
That, yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay, alright, we'll try it.
And we'll have, we'll heavily advertise.
And if it's not popular, we'll find out on Monday. Alright, um. What else, we have a clerk, you have anything? Okay, trustees, I think anything in advance, any trustees have anything? Alright, um, then I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Oh, so moved.
Motion trustee Pierce, second trustee Mason. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, meeting, this meeting's adjourned at seven twenty-nine, we'll take a five-minute break and move into the committee of whole meeting. And we'll do a brief, um, public comment again if somebody wants to say something before, okay? Thank you. Alright. Call the meeting back to order at seven thirty-nine PM, roll call please.
Here. Trustee Buthart?
Here.
Trustee McNeil?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Present.
Trustee Mason?
Here.
Trustee Peterson?
Present.
Mayor Gert.
Present, um, mayoral report, you heard, heard it earlier, we're going to do, um, one more time if citizens wishing to address the board, I think several people signed up, Mary, so would you mind passing that down? Alright, um. Alright, just Mr. Mulch, okay, so I'll give this to the clerk, sir, did you, were you intending to speak again?
Yeah, I just wanted to make this one quick.
Oh. Okay, well, we'll, you know his information, we'll just call you again, so we'll, okay, we have here, alright. So, um, the clerk will. We don't need the rules again, alright, just start. Yeah.
Your call though?
This is real quick, am I?
Yeah.
I apologize for breaking protocol earlier, I don't know.
It's fine.
Exactly, it's my first, I just wanted to point out, you know, I know you're discussing the solar farm for North Avenue. I just want to make sure you're aware of, of, uh, bill HB forty-one thirty-five, I don't know if you guys are aware of it.
Is that the five-hundred-foot setback you're talking about?
Five-hundred-foot setback.
Okay, and we'll make sure the lobbyist that we just approved knows about it.
Yeah, because it's, it, it's in, it, it, it's probably going to pass and before they. Yeah, because it's it it's in, it it it's probably going to pass and before they build that, it would be um great for the people in that area to have that far of a setback. I mean, it doesn't, you know, it takes care of uh some problems, but not all, but at least it's a step in the right direction. And that's all I really.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much, okay, yep, thank you. Um. Mr. Ma- Mr. Walsh?
I'm Stuart Walsh, I live at seventy-six Netherlands Drive, Antioch. Um. I have a question about, uh, Mr. Gotcha mentioned in the in the previous meeting, the design is in progress on the public work site. I'd like to know, has a financial source been determined? To build the, to build the site wherever it is?
Yeah, we usually don't debate or
Okay.
go back, but um there was a uh bond issued a year, two, two years ago, so the bond money has been sitting in a bank account uh for that project.
Did you have to change zoning or something like that in order to? Uh, I, the last meeting I was here was about a month ago and you, the board uh voted to study a funding source.
Yeah, there's not, it's, it'll be on a future, it'll be on a future agenda, it's not been passed or been approved yet.
And I'd just like to state that uh I'm in favor of building off the Grim, Grim roadside originally uh planned and exiting east on the existing Grim Road until the new Grim Road is constructed and we can reconnect it there too.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um. Regular business approval of the June fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes as presented, do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee McNeil.
Second.
Second trustee Berman, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Hi. Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Six voting yes motion carries, next item is um a BYOB license request from Queens Caribbean Kitchen. The application was in the packet for a BYOB license. Um, the applicant is here, if there are any questions, do I have a motion in a second regarding that item? Oh, sorry, any discussion regarding this item to move it for approval? Any, any, yes, trustee Peterson.
Do we have a motion a second?
No, we don't have to.
Okay.
Just discussion.
I I just want to um say I've never seen the restaurant open, so um, it says the hours here are from two PM to seven PM Thursday through Saturday. Um, I hope, I hope they're open.
Okay.
I hope they're open, I've never seen this restaurant open.
So um, if there's not any, oh, trustee Pierce.
Uh, just just my edification, um, because I forgot. Um, does a BYOB allow gambling?
No. It does not allow gambling. All right, then we will move that to the board meeting on the twenty, I'm gonna get the day wrong, twenty-fourth this time? July twenty-fourth, okay, so we'll put it up for a vote on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Next is a liquor license request from Lucky Coy DBA Asian Harbor. This is again just related to a corporate ownership change. The applicant is here, if there's any questions, they had a class B liquor license and the business model remains the same for the applicant. Um, although this one probably wouldn't allow. Yes, and and this one would allow, this type of license, if they decided would allow. Trustee Pierce?
I just want to say if, that you said the new owners are here? About a month and a half ago, I had.
About a month and a half ago, I was running late like I was today, but not on a meeting night. And I had nowhere to go to eat and I saw you guys were open, I went in there, I got a huge hawke and it was delicious. So please keep it that way. Thank you.
All right, all right, so we'll move that also, we'll vote on that one on July twenty-fourth as well, approval. Um, next is item number four, uh, Mr. Garrigan, I guess, I think we'll present this. This is a recommendation from the planning and zoning board regarding a recreational cannabis dispensary at four seventeen East Illinois Route one seventy-three.
Yes, thank you, your honor, uh, this matter comes before the board this evening for a request to propose special use in the variance for a proposed cannabis dispensary uh for the property company, it's one four seven um east route one seventy-three, as you well know. Any cannabis dispensary uh requires a special use individual, is cannabis ordinance. Moreover, the applicant um is also requesting a variance, this proposed property, and just for for again context, it's proposed is a retail, proposed site is a proposed uh existing retail center between Menards and uh Walmart. Uh, you recall uh roughly a year and a half ago, we had a previous applicant who came in for the exact same suite for a proposed dispensary. The variance is based on the fact that this proposed variant, uh proposed dispensary is within one thousand feet of an existing daycare. That's existing daycare on uh Deep Lake Road, just adjacent to the Aldi store. Um, so this did go before the planning commission, there was a favorable recommendation um for that. Um, again, the applicant is proposing to take two existing empty suites. Um, counsel is actually here for the applicant uh to answer any questions, but again, the applicant's requesting a special use in the variance for a cannabis dispensary, so with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Questions, trustee Bluthard?
Um. I want to make sure we, if we go forward with this one, that we don't run into the same problems that we did on the first one. Is there any way of putting a timeframe or time limit on the approval of this so that they don't move forward, that it reverts back or they lose the license?
We, similar to what we did with consumed cannabis, we can incorporate stipulation within the special use um to to basically have a stipulation with regards to time, a timeframe, so there'd be like a decision or probably more importantly, come back to the village board for reconsideration approval.
Well, if if there's no other objection, I'd like to see that included in any agreement.
Discussion?
Oh.
No.
I'll keep my mouth shut on this.
Any, any discussion, any questions for the applicant? So this would then go on the um, again, the July twenty-fourth agenda uh for vote. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Um. Next item, yeah, no, I guess you're staying up there. Next item is request for a special use for a drive-through for a Starbucks to be located at ten fifty-one Illinois Route fifty-nine, Mr. Garrett.
Yes, uh, thank you, your honor, again, this matter is coming this evening for a proposed special u- use in a safe plan for a property co- company knows ten fifty-one only at route fifty-nine, and that is the existing vacant lot, which is just adjacent to the Ace Hardware Route fifty-nine. What's before the planning commission of discussion, I'm sorry, vote board this evening is approximately twenty-five hundred square foot Starbucks. It's approximately a little less, a little less than an acre, there's an existing pad there, as you recall, Centrum came in a number of years ago, they did final plat, there's actually five outlots on the property. This is lot four, uh, with the only existing vacant lot, again, adjacent to the existing Ace Hardware. Um, there's this existing um stormwater retention pond on lot five. The applicant's proposing to construct a twenty-five hundred square foot Starbucks. Uh, there is a drive-through, as you well know, all uh drive-throughs do require a special use of the village of Antioch. The applicant uh is coming in with a a drive-through, there's actually specifically twelve uh stacking, a stacking positions. Uh, this design in many ways is configured based on the stacking, um, approximately eighty-five, almost eighty-five percent of all Starbucks business um is actually done by drive-throughs, that's clearly the trend in um fast casual restaurants and uh fast food restaurants now is drive-throughs. So the design, this site is really oriented towards drive-through, a drive-through aspect, specifically struck your attention the PowerPoint, uh, staff did work with the applicant, um, after the planning commission, the applicant did make some modifications, incorporate some additional architectural elements. Uh, again, this proposed um proposed elevation does comply with the village's ordinance, it's a majority face brick. Um, and the applicant did again add some additional architectural elements to um all three elevations to try to address staff's concerns. I know we had one trustee who was concerned about uh proposed configuration of this building. Uh, the proposed front of the building is facing hillside, and the back of the building uh is facing um route fifty-nine. The basis for that, I, is based on what Starbucks is requesting, but more more importantly, the stacking um of the actual drive-through itself, this type of configuration provides a maximum amount of stacking. I know there's been some uh frustration about existing stacking um um challenges over at the existing Starbucks on route on on one seventy-three in Deep Lake Road, so we have worked with this uh applicant to provide a maximum amount of stacking based on the drive-through uh demand for a Starbucks. Uh, so with that, again, there's thirty-three spaces, the spaces, uh, actual parking spaces exceeds the village's minimum requirements. The village, the proposed stacking on this lot um also exceeds the village's minimum requirements. And then staff work with the applicant on extensive buff, landscape buffering around the site itself to try to mitigate any negative impact the fact back, based on the fact that the back of the building faces route fifty-nine. Uh, we did work with the applicant to incorporate extensive landscaping, ornamental trees, which will provide some seasonal color along fifty-nine. So a representative from Hubbard Development is actually here this evening to answer any questions that the board has. Uh, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions relating to this proposed site plan. Thank you.
All right, I'll start inside, questions? Trustee Pierce?
Sure, um. First thing I noticed on this plan obviously was the way it was turned backwards. Um, but if I look at the plans that you you've put in the packet here, traffic exit exits out into the the Ace Hardware Store?
Yes.
Parking lot?
Well, no, it's.
Is that the same?
The drive aisle, there's an exist, as you know, there's an existing access point on fifty-nine, which services the Ace Hardware, also services CVS and also the bank there. None of those access.
They're gonna have everybody coming into Starbucks like they do on one seventy-three. They're going to be coming into Ace, they're going to be coming in CVS, all in this one access point. And we were considering that safe.
Well, IDOT will not approve another access point on route fifty-nine, is, as you well know, or maybe you don't know. Um, the one Centrum came in for this development, they had a basically access uh plan. So there's one full access point on this proposal, so yes, there's one full proposed access um for this proposal, I mean, I don't, I don't know if all Starbucks have multiple accesses on SRAs. I mean, we, you're not going to get additional access point on this major SRA.
I I'm just thinking of the safety of that, the loading even maybe tripling the traffic going in there. I know what a pain it is when I go over there and get my medicines from CVS, I gotta either take a left and then swing around and turn right immediately into the CVS off one seventy-three, or I gotta go down and do every god awful speed bump in the Ace Hardware parking lot to get to the, to get to the CVS going through Ace Hardware, and we're gonna be doing the same thing to the Starbucks people one way or the other. Um, I just don't see where the, we we already made a mistake on one seventy-three. I I think we may be getting complaints about the traffic flow coming through that one access point. That's my first point. The second point is because it's more convenient for them to stack it the way they want to, we're gonna have the residents that come in on one fifty-nine see the side or the back of a building instead of a nice, nice visual facade on the front i- if I read this correctly, because it's more convenient for them and that's what the industry standard is now.
Well, we we did discuss, um, yeah, we did discuss offer different use, yes, you saw based on email I sent you, different scenarios with regards to different configurations. That does have a dramatic impact on the drive-through, so to be fair, your point is valid. We are, Starbucks is basically uh requesting this, I'll be more than happy, I think it'd probably be appropriate to have a developer representative of Hubbard Development, maybe provide you the ba- factual basis for the configure, proposed configuration, the building itself. Um, I think so, we have, do have a representative of Hubbard to maybe outline what Starbucks is requesting.
I I understand what they're requesting, I'm just saying, that's one of the remaining fairly nice looking accesses to the village of Antioch. As soon as you hit one seventy-three and Deep Lake Road, we're gonna have a, we have all that, that that conglomeration over there, so that's, that's kind of getting lost.
Um, I mean, it's obviously your prerogatives, request a modification of the site plan, the oriented building to um uh oriented towards route fifty-nine, that's the prerogative of the board, now whether that would have obviously a negative impact on the stacking uh the proposed um Starbucks, whether the proposed site plan works, that will be up to, that'd be a corporate decision. But as you all know, it's your prerogative to request a modification.
It is, it is my prerogative, but it's also, as you mentioned, up to the rest of the board, but unless somebody brings it up, they may not be thinking about it. So that's why I'm bringing it up. Okay, uh, the other thing you mentioned was the ornamental trees, if it does be put in this position um that it will help with the atmosphere and the aesthetics of it. Uh, if I read this correctly, there's gonna be six trees and eighty bushes.
Yeah, well, I mean.
We put more interest in the screening that they provided on the solar farm on North Avenue than we are on this.
Well, I think there's a difference, to be fair, I think there's a difference between a solar farm and a proposed twenty-five hundred square foot Starbucks. Just respectfully, I think there's a difference regards to buffering. Uh, they, as you know, there are certain planting disses for ornamental trees, um, so that's, that's, that's the basis for.
There's also a difference in looking at the back end of the building and looking at the front end of the building.
Right, I understand your point.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
All right, I got one. So if I was in that subdivision across the street, I'd rather look at the front of the building, I got a five, six hundred thousand dollar home. I'd like to look at the front of the building, then look at the back of the building. We had this discussion when, years ago, when they want body shop over there, they wanted to flip the building. And, yeah, they can do something to the, to the back of the building, they'll spuce it up to fifty-nine. The traffic, you go Pleasant Prairie, you get one entrance going in to service twenty stores, that's a non-issue. So, I don't understand that comment, yeah, that's IDOT, IDOT makes that decision. So. You gotta take into consideration, people spend a lot of money for their house not to look at the back of the building, they'd rather look at the front of the building, I think this plan sits. You know, people are gonna drive, yeah. So I got no problem with the six hundred thousand dollar person, or someone buys a house and that's what they're looking at. Nice front of the building.
Trustee Peterson?
Yes. So behind on Hillside, there used to be an access
Right.
into that parking lot. And it's closed off.
Right. I think one of the points I, I was, yeah, I was a made aware that they then, you know, the residents did not want i- in access into this commercial um proposal lot.
I understand it could be a one-way just out.
We could, I mean, we can look at, I'll be more than happy to look at that.
The only reason I'm saying it is you've got people driving in there, we have absolutely no idea how many cars are going to be going in and out of there. It's a Starbucks. So. If they had the opportunity to either come back out on two fifty-nine or go out on to Harden and out to, out to one seventy-three that way, or down Hillside, now I lived at ten ninety-one Hillside years ago. And the traffic runs fast, we asked for a stop sign right at Hennings Gordon Hillside. That would alleviate anyone screaming down that street and trying to get out on to fifty-nine. They have to stop there at the stop sign and then continue on.
Right.
But it would split up the traffic coming out of this. And I, and I understand people don't like it, I lived there, it wasn't that bad.
Right.
I mean, I lived right there, facing Hillside. My driveway was facing Hillside, so I I understand what they're saying, however, if this creates more of a uh just to help with traffic flow, every single car going through Starbucks is gonna come out on to fifty-nine? Or snake through and go out on to one seventy-three? Um, if 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 there was another access, it would, I think alleviate some of the issues there.
Well, I, and that's a fair point, I mean, I understand your point, and I know there, I could just be represent that there were a fair number of people who called me, because as you know, we posted a sign, there were a lot of people concerned about potential traffic on Hillside. The representation was at that point, there was not an access, proposed access point uh on Hillside, if the board, again, desires, if they think it's appropriate, to have an additional access point or right in, right out, or Hillside, that's.
It could be just one way, you can't, you can't come in, but you can go out that way.
Right, you could do a limited access.
Yeah.
So that, I'll be more than happy to explore that with the applicant, and you know, if that's something the board is, if there's a.
I don't, am I the only one that feels this way?
Happy to work on a modification and bring that back for further discussion at the next board meeting.
And if, if they're worried about people speeding along uh uh um Hillside there, I understand that. But a stop sign at Hennings Gordon Hillside would, and both ways.
Right.
You're coming in on fifty-nine, you stop, and then you continue on or vice versa. It would help, there's a bus stop there as well. So that would really help.
But I'd be more than happy to work with the applicant and look at that.
It's just a suggestion to relieve the congestion.
Trustee Pierce?
I I just want to respond to the the Pleasant Prairie comment, uh, because it is very valid that up in Pleasant Prairie, they may have one access point, but if you, anybody ever drives up to Pleasant Prairie, they'll notice that the state of Wisconsin plans their roads and widens them, give proper turn lanes and make sure everything is safe, or the state of Illinois just maintains a two-lane road without even a proper turn lane, so it's, it's, it's a false comp- it's, it's, it's a false comparison, in my opinion.
Any other discussion about this, so, um, between now and the twenty-fourth, you'll work with the applicant and see if-
Yes, we can look at additional access point, um, if that's the board's desire, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Alright, thank you. Next item, which is, um, a newer item, just for discussion, and we don't have to come up with the exact policy tonight, but, um, I, I, again, we appreciate everybody coming into the village board for recognitions. I just want to know, maybe, you know, at some point, we could have a policy, whether the people have to be residents, or the organization has to be Antioch-based, um, looking at some other, um, you know, some other sites, I don't want to be, you know, giving Brent and Scott, you know, pickleball, uh, team awards, because they were the pickleball champions of the, of some tournament, but-
You know how well I play.
Yeah, yeah, but I think we're gonna have to get some policy at some point, because it's becoming more and more popular, which, again, we appreciate it. Uh, the recognition's not as much as the signage on the expressways, because obviously, there's a cost to that, and we get quite a few calls. And then, obviously, um, setting the precedent, you give the one, you know, it just kind of goes a little further and further, so. Um, we can discuss it a little bit tonight, um, if the board has some parameters, they'd like Lori to look at other towns, um. Nobody has a policy, okay? Nobody has a policy.
What, what is our current policy? I don't even know what that is. So, how does that work currently?
She asked me if we could recognize them, and I, you know, usually say yes.
Yeah, there's usually a request from the, the family for a state championship sign, um, when an individual wins a state championship, but there, there are occasions where it's, um, an Antioch organization, um, and the athlete does not live in Antioch, should they get a sign. Or it's a township school, um, or it's, um, uh, uh, an Antioch resident who goes to a private school outside of Antioch, should they get a sign. So the, or, the, the figure skater, um, that we recognized a couple of meetings ago, um, is from Antioch, but his team that he competed with nationally was out of mood. So those are the kinds of, um, things we have to consider.
And, and the cost of the signs currently is borne by the village, I'm assuming?
It's not, it is, um, we request the signs from I dot, and they put them up at our request. They allow two signs per entrance to the village, so usually there is, um, one on the west side of one seventy-three, and one on the east side of one seventy-three, or eighty.
And, and those are up for how long?
Until they're replaced by a new state team.
I, I mean, I personally think we should recognize them all, all the time, I mean, this is one of the nice things that we do, and I think these kids, adults, whoever is being recognized, I, I'd like to see us up that more than lower it, so I'd, I'd be in favor of a, a policy that allows for, for all of those that we've done. Um, I think these kids, these, these teams all work hard, if they have a connection with Antioch, if they attend a a school that are, it covers our village or something else, or they live in the village, we should have no problem recognizing them, uh, for all their hard work.
trustee Pierce?
I, I agree, I think we need to recognize the, 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 the champions, but I think as we're looking through this and coming up with formal policy, because nowadays you need formal policies on everything. I think we need to look at what groups and organizations were allowing, what people were allowing, and maybe looking and expanding, because there's people that'll never be in sports, but they may do something spectacular, you know, like be a math champion, or be a-
We did have a state champion for Rebecca Zurich, who was a science champion, she was an Antioch resident who went to Carmel.
Correct, so I just think we need to make sure we're covering all, all people, somebody who gets a, a amazing scholarship to the White House, maybe he needs, you know, just, just look at, or if there's a handicapped child that does something special, maybe they you know, win, win the summer Olympic, the Special Olympics event.
Yeah.
Or if it was an individual that looked like Wisconsin, but won for a team in Antioch.
You recognize the team.
Yeah, I would say-
For, for track and field, there's not, you know, there's overall, but then there's shot put, discus, five hundred for gymnastics, there's floor vaults, you know, like this fellow that we recognized tonight, there's different, um, individual um, achievements that they can win state in or overall, that they can win state in.
Definitely, in my opinion, there's gotta be some tidying, whether it's an organization or a person.
First chair.
Alright, so we'll keep working through that. Um, any other business needs to be discussed? Alright, um, any department reports, you have communications? Jim, do you have any report? Okay.
Evening, mayor, village board. Uh, just wanted to give you guys an update, as you're aware, we're currently in the process of hiring a communications and events person for the village, I'm working with clerk Robine right now to review resumes and applications, and um, our plan is to begin the, um, interview process soon, while we still work to recruit for more applicants for the position. Uh, we, we have a good amount of strong candidates right now, but we're, this is a critical position for the village, so we're gonna work to still publicize that, and hopefully have somebody hired and onboarded soon, uh, so we're gonna expedite that process. Um, I wanted to bring up the fact earlier this month, I was at the I L C M A conference, which is the Illinois uh, city and county managers association. It's a good opportunity for professional development, I was there for two days and had an opportunity to not only network with peers from across the state, but I sat in on a good economic development, um, session, uh, uh, with several municipalities presenting what they do for their downtown, so it's a good idea to get some good ideas for things that we do here in Antioch. Also sat through a cybersecurity session, which was alarming and scary.
Stayed awake the whole time?
Yeah, and I stayed awake the whole time, thanks to coffee. Um, earlier, uh, I worked with, uh, director Gergen to update our website with, um, our rental ordinance and tenant rights, and link to the tenant rights um, page for the Illinois Attorney General's office, so that's not only up on our website, uh, but it also was promoted on our, uh, Facebook page as well for residents. Uh, I wanted to highlight a couple of our, uh, employees with the village, uh, in the finance department, Dawn Muskovich, and also in public works, Sherry Hoban, uh, worked to identify, uh, Dawn identified uh, an opportunity for savings, uh, for about four thousand dollars a year for taxpayers for Antioch, uh, with our fuel card system. And I, I assisted them very briefly, they did all the work, uh, but they were able to, um, come up with a, a way where we're switching our fuel card to a different platform, uh, which will save us about four thousand dollars a year annually, so uh, that was identified by Dawn, and Dawn and Sherry did all the work to put that together. And then I've been working with, um, I had a meeting yesterday with Hitchcock Design, who, uh, we had approved to do our Ozlet grant application and Centennial Park master plan. So we're, they had our initial meeting yesterday, and we're moving the ball forward. The application deadline for that is in September, so in August, we'll have something for you guys to approve to apply. Thank you.
Oh, did you win an award at that event?
So I, I'm a co-host for the I L C M A monthly podcast, and they recognized me and, uh, my colleague, uh, Melanie Santo Stefano, who has a P R agency. Uh, they recognized us with, um, our, um, commitment to the I L C M A organization, it's kind of neat.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, Parks, any report? No Parks report tonight, Public Works, Richard Heinbro. I will say, um, for Parks, they made a change in the policy this year at the pool, that they have breaks every hour. There have been no accidents in pool closures this year so far, that seems to be a good policy, to get the kids out of the water every hour.
Uh, thank you, and good evening. Um, with the recent, uh, storm events, I'd like to just share with you and, and show my appreciation to some of my staff, uh, several of them, uh, especially Saturday night, were called in at nine thirty, worked through the night till Sunday at five thirty in the morning. Uh, basically, excuse me, responding to multiple situations related to trees down, our lift stations that don't have backup generators, power loss, some of our, uh, well systems, um, and then basically the treatment plant operations, so uh, those employees, uh, really showed great effort and worked all through the night. Uh, also with the storm, um, both, uh, Monday and Saturday, just wanted to let you know that, uh, we are going to be doing a, uh, village-wide uh, brush pickup for any of the residents that had trees or limb damage that came down in their yard, if they bring it to the side of the road. We will be doing, uh, two sweeps through town, hopefully, having all that wrapped up.
Which day was that?
We started today.
Okay.
And we'll basically be doing it every day, uh, weather dependent, and hope to have the two sweeps through the village done by the fall, so. Um, over the past couple of weeks, uh, we've welcomed two new employees. Uh, Nick Siemens, he was hired in the wastewater treatment plant, a full-time position, he'll help with the operations there, and then, uh, Gina Owens, she was our hired part-time in the water department, and she'll be doing, uh, duly locates and, uh, water meter reading. And then, uh, if, if time allows, she'll help with, uh, other projects that we have going on. Um, well nine, that is fully operational now, it's, uh, completed and tested. So that, uh, well is back online, well seven, uh, the work for well seven is scheduled to start next week, hopefully. Um, maybe with the fourth, they may push it to the following week, so. Um, and then recently, uh, week or two ago, I received an update from the engineer at the county D O T, uh, which is actually H R Green, um, they're doing the engineering for Deep Lake Road. So, uh, he gave me an update on the project from North Avenue to one seventy-three, uh, including the two roundabouts. They're splitting it into two phases. Uh, currently, depot is in the first phase, and that'll run to the, uh, south to one seventy-three. And they're in the final, uh, engineering design for that first phase, and it's proposed to be bid in October of twenty twenty-four.
That's a question? Alright, thank you for picking all that stuff up. Alright, um, any requests for executive session, do they have any for? So if not, um, we're gonna ask for a motion to adjourn while the sun's still out, which is a nice milestone, so, motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Motion, trustee McNeil, second, trustee Peterson, all in favor? Any opposed? Meeting's adjourned to eight fifteen.